This way when you push.
Are we ready? Are we recording?
Yes.
We are, okay. Well, welcome, everyone. It's five o'clock. My name is Mayor Mike Wickers. This is the Cottonwood Heights City Council Work Session. And I am thrilled to be here with a renowned group of people and to accomplish a lot. Before we get into our first item on the work session agenda, so I had a dream last night. And about this meeting, I literally came to this meeting and there was nobody here. And I walked into the offices and think, shame. Walked into the offices and started asking, well, why is nobody in the meeting? And they said, well, nobody told us that you that it was required that we had to be here. So thank you all for being here and knowing that this is a required meeting. My nightmare is over. Okay, well. Our first item on our work session agenda is the City Lobbyist Report. We have with us today Mr. Brian Allen, Ms. Chantel Nate, and Mr. Greg Curtis. And we are grateful for you to be here with us today. We understand as a council, your importance to our city. And especially in this next session, we are really looking forward to everything that you're going to help us with. What we're going to start with before we turn the time over to you is Tim is going to talk about some of the things that we've listed and highlighted. They're going to be really important to us that might help you as you do your presentation. So thanks, Tim.
Yeah, well, thank you. I've included the information in the packet on some areas of priority that we really want discussion tonight from the council and give input to our lobbyists, to Chantel and Brian and Greg, related to the upcoming legislative session. The session obviously starts mid-January. But we've been working on things all year long. It's a year-long process. There's a number of committees with Utah League of Cities and Towns that we've all been participating in. And from those committees and from that information, there's a number of issues that the league has identified as issues of priority that has implications, especially for us. And some of those items I've listed in this memo, obviously funding for highway road projects, anything related to our streets is something that we look at with allocations. The environmental impact statement process with UDOT and Wasatch Boulevard is a big issue this year that may have implications from the legislature. Anything related to Wasatch Boulevard and transportation issues is a priority. And then other things, open space, funding options. We've been able to seek funding in the past, even last year, for some funding related to that. So those are two things. Short-term rentals has been a big issue for our community. I've served on a short-term rental subcommittee. That there's been a number of meetings and there's been a lot of discussion related to that. So that's a priority item that we've identified. Density and zoning review modifications, you may know, but there's been discussion and Brian and Chantel especially have been involved in this where there's some proposals out there looking at much more or much higher density even in single-family neighborhoods. So those are issues we're looking at. There's issues related to justice courts, opioid settlements, Garity Statement Modifications, which we've been involved with related to public safety. Fireworks is always an issue that we look at and justice courts. Then there's a variety of other issues. You can look in the memo. There's retail incentive options that are being modified or looked at this year, both from the governor's office as well as the legislature. There's amendments to the modified income or Modern Income Housing Plan, Land and Water Eminent Domain, Public Safety Retirement Changes. All of these that are issues that are on our radar. But those first bullet points are some of the things that we think are really high priorities, but we would really like Brian and Chantel and Greg to give your insight on what you're seeing out there. And then we'd love to have any other input from the council members related to these priorities or other issues.
Okay, thanks, Tim. This is going to be a very interesting session. I mean, it's election year, so that always creates a little bit of an interesting dynamic up there. And there are a lot of things, I think. Two things that kind of go together, I think there'd be big priorities for the legislature are, first of all, there's a lot of surplus money available, more so than we've seen in years past. And they're looking at a lot of infrastructure development around that. And that has a wide range of things that they're going to talk about. You know, water resources is a big, going to be a big issue to drive a lot of the conversation up there. We've just gone through a redistricting process. There's some people out there that aren't happy with how that turned out. So I think there'll be some discussion during the session about that. That doesn't have really a direct impact on us. But these, those are things will take up some oxygen up there. And then election law changes. We've already seen a number of bills filed on election law changes. Some of them, we don't know what they are yet because they're just title only. So we don't really know what all the, what they're really looking at doing. But there's, they obviously, they want to ensure that we have integrity in our elections and that people have the that type of thing. So those are all things. I know we've already got about 100, over 100 bills or bill files on our tracking list for this year, which is a lot for this early, that could impact the city. You know. There's a number of bills out there on public safety retirement, trying to figure out, I mean, I don't have to tell you. It's challenging right now to recruit people in public safety and they're looking at ways to adjust retirement. Some of the people who have retired back in, allow them to get back in easy enough and make sure they have access to benefits. So that's a big deal.
Just public safety or is it all tier two? Tier two across the state?
Yeah. Primarily for us, impact public safety, but yeah. And the other thing that's kind of a new thing for us to watch is there are several bills on protections for medical cannabis users or public employees. It would not, right now, the bills don't impact private sector, but public employees, which includes city employees. If they're medical cannabis user, they want some protections in place for them. Apparently, I don't know what's prompting that. I guess there's some issues somewhere along the way. But you know, for the most part, most employers and most government entities have sort of a zero tolerance policy for testing. You know, if you test positive for an illicit substance, and marijuana is still illegal at the federal level. But what these bills will do is take marijuana off the table if they have a legitimate cannabis, like a medical cannabis card. And I think in general, that with for most employers, that's true. If you've been prescribed an opioid for pain, you test, employment test, and you produce the prescription for your doctor, it's not been an issue. So I think they're just putting it kind of on par with other medications. So that's a big deal. Affordable housing is a really big issue, as you know. And that, and under the umbrella of affordable housing, there are a lot of things that Tim mentioned, and that is, you know, the zoning issues. There is a, there is a sense that up there that in the legislative process, that if you can increase the density, you can lower the cost of real estate. And so they're looking, really pushing at that. And I know that goes counter and contrary to what everybody in the neighborhoods wants. Most neighborhoods don't want high-density housing. And there are places where it's probably fine and appropriate. We see some popping up around the city that seems to be, you know.
So you mentioned they're pushing that. So what are, in your thought process, what are they actually trying to do?
Well, what, what, well, I mean, they've, I mean, this has been around for a while. This isn't a new thing. They've, they want to, they want to discourage large, single-family lots. They want to, they want to make sure that there is a way for developer to come in and do a high-density development if they have a certain tract of land. And they've done things in the past where they've allowed higher density if they set aside some open space. And I think what they want to do is sort of negate some of that and just give them more options to do high-density housing. And that's been, I mean, this is perennial issue that we've, I mean, it's been around for probably as long as I've bothered with the city. So it's been, it's been a big issue. So.
Do you see the TOD, the Transit Oriented Development? Is that kind of language being introduced in these bills that puts an incentivizing for cities and builders to look at having it on either currently funded or built transit or, you know, transit that is funded out into the future? Do you see?
Yes, that they're, they do, they do try to do that. They have tried to do that. And you'll see, I mean, it's obvious. If you go down a light rail corridor, the number of high-density, you know, units you see along there, it's just incredible to me. I don't know where all the people are coming from, but fill them up, but they fill them up. And so there's a lot of that. And they are looking at those kinds of things. So they're looking at, you know, having higher density housing on, you know, major corridors, either transit corridors or transportation corridors. And that, and that can be a double-edged sword, you know, depending on what the corridor is and what it is. I mean, if you were to run Lightwell along Wasatch Boulevard, and that ultimately became Transit Oriented Development eligible, that would change the character of that community considerably. So there are some things, you know, we have to kind of be mindful of how those look long-term. And so obviously, we'll do whatever you guys tell us to do. I mean, that's what we do. But I mean, that's, the discussions are around those kinds of things.
Well, of course, with our general plan this year, I mean, maybe we don't know right now exactly what the city and the council wants. But even Fort Union Boulevard, I mean, it, you know, it doesn't have to be a tracks line to be transit, but you have the ability for, you know, people to access some alternate.
Yeah. And I think, you know, however, however you want us to position that, you know, we're happy to do that up there. And that's what we do. But they're, they're talking about a lot of different things. And there's not one thing that anybody's really settled on. But they know, I mean, I don't think it's a secret, there's an affordable housing crisis going on right now. I mean, it's tough. It really is hard. And so they've done things like ADUs was a big bill last year that they, they hope would help alleviate, you know, put some more stock out there for rental to help lower costs and make it more affordable. And I think to some degree, that's probably happening in a microcosm. I don't know if it's happening on the macro side. But I think on the micro side, it is happening. I know people who have made rooms and space available for fairly affordable rates, you know, and it's been helpful. So those kinds of things. Tim, real quick, was going to add something.
So also with the Modern Income Housing Plan, which is something they're looking at, potential modifications to that. That's something that cities have to adopt, which gives a number of different options to impact affordable housing. One of the things they are looking at, and I've heard, and you're probably aware, also is they do have transportation elements in that with TODs as a selection elements. But if you're not meeting some of those requirements, they're looking at the possibility of penalties for cities in some way, financial penalties. And so that's something that we're, is on our radar related to that.
Yeah, some of that comes down to is there, the cities are an easy whipping boy. And there's 240-plus municipalities and towns. And what happens is it only takes one or two to say, well, we're not going to allow any multifamily housing. Period. Then discussion. And then the legislature says, we don't think that's the right policy. And then they try and enact policy that affects the other 338. Okay. And so some of that challenge has been some of those cities that just say, no, you're, they're not, they won't do anything. And so they're talking about putting teeth in the, for, in the Modern Income Housing Plan. Right now, it's kind of a set of guidelines, and you have to show that you're in compliance with a list of this menu-type thing. And they're talking about saying, well, let's see if we can slap some teeth in there. Do you have your fair share of housing stock, what they believe, you know? And so that will be an ongoing discussion and it has been for years.
Yeah, a number of issues that we deal with up there as a result of somebody running afoul of common sense somewhere out there. And then all the cities sort of get swept into the same bucket. And so we end up having to fight, you know, battles that are created by somebody else's foolishness. But.
And what's common sense in penguins, doesn't make common sense for payers.
Right. It's a different world. I think some other things that we're watching are obviously, short-term rentals are an ongoing discussion up there. I thought the solution that the legislature landed on last was probably the most workable. But I hear they want to tweak it again. And there's some effort to just let anybody who wants to do short-term rental do it. So there's, there's this whole spectrum of opinions up there about what should be done. I think the general consensus is that they want to, they want to try to limit it. And I think there's a study out. I don't know if it's made public yet or not.
It's not yet.
But I think it kind of tells the tale that short-term rentals are probably actually hurting affordability, not helping it. So because it's taking otherwise affordable stock off and turning it into higher-value short-term rental stock. So.
The legislation you said passed last year, can you tell us more about that?
Well, I mean, they designated a certain percentage of your zones could be short-term rental, but it wasn't going to be everything. It couldn't be anywhere. You had to have a certain number of, you know, a certain percentage of your zones that would allow short-term rental. And that seemed to be a good compromise. But we still have cities pushing back on that, making it tough. So that raises the ire of the legislature. When they think they've got a solution and then people don't go along, it makes it challenging.
If I may, just because actually the data that I know going on in other destinations around the world, as soon as you have the Airbnb's and short-term rentals, then the actual residents of that area, the lower-income residents are priced out because people realize they can, you know.
Yeah.
So what kind of data is the legislature working to press for more short-term rentals?
Well, that's, there is a study out there. It's not been made public yet. So I don't know all the details of it. But, and I don't know that I could share them if I knew them, because it's not public. But they have data that supports exactly what you're saying.
Yeah. And that, that study was commissioned by the Utah League of Cities and Towns to just understand what the issues are related to short-term rentals. But yeah, it is an out.
And on the eminent domain front, there is one bill out there that I've seen that's got language in it that would prohibit using eminent domain to build a public park. It would, so they kind of fall into the same trails and exemption. So I don't know if that's a big deal to the city. I don't know if we've ever used eminent domain to build a park. But so apparently, there's a legislature out there that's got heartburn with that. So that's out there. And then you mentioned sales tax modifications. There, I mean, that's been talked about for years too. You know, we had the grand, what I call the sort of grand compromise on sales tax, you know, some years ago. I think when I was in, I think when we were in the legislature, it happened. But, you know, they, it worked out a deal where, how the split worked on sales tax. And there's been some concern that that's incentivizing the wrong kind of development. And so it's maybe creating more commercial space and less housing space. And so there's all kinds of things, discussion about that. So there are a whole lot of things that we're sort of trying to stuff under the umbrella of affordable housing because it's vogue to do that right now. And that's one, that's another one of them that you hear talked about as well. We're incentivizing cities to build commercial, not to build residential. So that's part of the problem too. And I don't know if that's really true or not, but that's what they're saying. So, and you know, in the legislative process, if you can take a fact and twist it to fit your idea, then that's what they do. And that's just how it works. So we have a lot to be prepared to deal with that, I think, when it comes up. But it's not, I mean, this has been bounced about for a number of years. So it's not, I don't know that it's eminent, but it's certainly something that we continue to hear about. And it does, you know, occasionally gain more steam than in some years than others. I think this is a year where it could gain a little steam. So we're certainly going to keep an eye on that. And we work very closely with the league on all of these issues. So we make sure that we've got a good coalition of folks that are helping, you know, pushing the message out there. But definitely going to be an interesting year. And I didn't talk any about transportation. I don't leave all of that. That's kind of Greg's world. And so those are, but that's going to be a big, big issue this year, I think, for.
Yeah, a lot of these things are intertwined, obviously, in regards to transit, affordable housing, TODs, all that. They all get somewhat intertwined. We're in a unique situation where UDOT is, I think, for the first time that I can remember in 30 years, kind of publicly saying, all right, we're tapped out. Don't give us any more money. We can't really do anymore. And that's, that's not very common in a state agency to say, hey, don't give us any more money, you know? I mean, and so they're, they're literally, but the difficulty or challenge with that is just, they don't, they claim they can't accelerate or do anything any faster than what they're doing. Certainly don't touch any of their money, you know? They don't want you to take anything away. But the problem with that is UDOT is funded through a dedicated earmark on the sales tax is equivalent to about 21% of every sales tax dollar that's collected goes into a restricted fund for transportation in the TIF. And, and anyway, as sales tax has been growing, it increases the money going to them and everything else. So UDOT is kind of saying, we're programmed out for several years. Let's just take a pause. But they've never really addressed funding because all municipalities and a lot of the municipalities where there's high cross-traffic, there's a lot of traffic that come to cities, especially in Salt Lake County. But sometimes even in rural cities, if you think about Canab in August, they have a whole lot of traffic that doesn't have, anybody has any relationship with Canab at all. They're just on their way to Lake Powell. And we have a whole lot of traffic of people that are on their way to ski resorts, or on their way south on Highland Drive. But they haven't addressed a meaningful way to deal with that. And we continually talk with them about that. They throw some peanuts and, you know, try and keep us entertained with that, but they haven't meaningfully addressed that. We're working a little bit on that again, trying to, you know, they, their responses as well. The cities can always raise the property tax, you know? It's a kind of a it's a weak, weak answer, but it's one that they use. So there it is. So we'll be working on that. The big elephant in the room is gondola. Let me just candidly say, UDOT is about as tight-lipped about anything and everything associated with the gondola because they are really trying to protect and respect their environmental process. So last session, when we ran funding for the canyons, and it wasn't the city, but I worked on funding for the canyon's transportation. And we said, well, it's gondola funding. And it, I said, it doesn't say anything at all in there about gondolas. It could be buses, it could be gondola. It could be trains. It could be whatever their environmental decision is. And UDOT worked on the legislation and said, keep it broad. It's Cottonwood Canyons. It could be bigger, little. It could be, but, you know, whatever solution they decide to implement. My candid perception is just that regardless of what's decided, if there's any disturbance in bigger, little Cottonwood Canyon, by that, I mean either gondola and/or additional lanes for buses, there'll probably be litigation associated with that.
May I ask a clarifying question? Okay, so the Little Cottonwood Canyon EIS that UDOT is running is strictly SR210 from the mouth of the Cottonwood Canyon, of course, to Alta. So I'm a little bit confused. You're talking about monies for Big Cottonwood Canyon.
The fund that was created just says Cottonwood Canyons, okay? And it has to be further appropriated by the legislature.
And what is the fund called? I'm not familiar with it.
I don't know. I can't remember what it called it. But it's basically, there's a restricted fund that we created last session. It puts up to $20 million a year into it called Cottonwood Canyons. And essentially, it's Cottonwood Canyon Transportation Solutions.
Because we can raise our property tax, but our entire property tax bill is kind of a cough in UDOT's budget.
Yeah.
Excuse me, they're $8 million.
Yeah. No. And so, and the reality of it is their projects are.
But they do cut, they do have bigger fish to fry.
Right. And so, so that, but that has to be appropriated. But it's not, it's just sitting there in a restricted fund in the legislature. Because UDOT won't have their environmental document done. Okay. And so, but the immediate issue for, you know, Cottonwood Heights is going to be what happens with Wasatch Boulevard between the mouth of Big Cottonwood Canyon and the South End of the city. Okay. Because whatever solution UDOT comes up with, the Little Cottonwood Canyon, it's going to have impact on that segment of road. Okay. And I don't know what that's going to be. I've tried to speak with Carlos Priscaris. Carlos was very, you know, he's, Carlos and I have known each other for 30 years or 28 years. He's very candid and just said, Greg, I'm not talking about this with anybody. And I respect that because his position is, I think he fully expects that someday he'll be sitting in a deposition, and he wants to be able to say, I didn't talk about it with anybody, you know? That I mean, or if I talked to anybody about it, it might, the only person I imagine he will talk to by the time they make the decision is probably the governor, his boss. And then the governor will be able to say, well, I'm going to claim executive privilege and I'm not going to be deposed. And, and there you go. But they'll make a decision on environmental and then we'll see where that goes. We're more, we're going to be trying to work on what I would call reasonably significant roads. Highland Drive, Bengal Bar, Fort Union. I can't remember if Fort Union's a state road all the way or not.
It's not.
It's.
City road. The only one they have is Wasatch. Okay. So candidly, in my opinion, I mean, and there's trade-offs, but I believe Fort Union.
It's a state road up to Union Park, I believe. When you get off at Midville, it's a state road up to Union Park.
1300.
Oh, up to 1300. I didn't know.
No, no, go back to, yeah.
Union Park, where the, or 215 comes off. Yeah. And I, I candidly, I mean, and it's a trade-off for the city. It's a policy decision you make. But I think it's, would be fairly purposeful. Guys, that ought to be a state road. That carries a significant amount of traffic that has nothing to do with Cottonwood Heights, but you're making us bear all of the cost. Trade-offs being the moment you turn it over to UDOT, your ability to ingress, egress, other issues becomes a lot more difficult in planning. But, but there are some of those things that we'll be working on and we'll be working on trying to obtain funding. We have, a few years ago, we got the money for parking structure site yet to be determined. That was four or five years ago. I think originally, we thought it would be over here towards gravel pits. Had an interesting conversation with, I got a call from an attorney, former partner, a friend of mine. He says, Greg, my client, he's looking to hire a lobbyist, you know, and I said, okay, what's the issue? And he says, well, he's the trustee for this gravel pit. I said, whoa, whoa, timeout, timeout. I said, I, you know, I said, I can't represent him and explain why. I said, maybe we could have a conference call. And so I got UDOT on the call, I got Mr. Shelby on the call, and he was losing. He was losing his mind, and. And I say that with affection, but he was very animated about that, and so, anyway, we're going to have to be engaged to figure out. Cause any kind of solution to Big End or Little Cottonwood Canyon, or busing, or whatever it might be, is going to involve, where do you put all the people? And there's a lot of talk about, I mean, I've talked with, I talked with Mayor Wilson, Mayor Menden Hall. They're saying, can we create transportation hubs throughout the valley where people would get on and go bus, go skiing out there? You can do whatever you can get the votes to do, I'm just not sure that they want to build a transportation hub out in Taylorsville and say, let's go skiing in Big Cottonwood Canyon. Certainly make a lot of sense that way, so, anyway, those are some of the issues, and we'll be working, there is a lot of money. UDOT saying, we can't take anymore, they did last year a list of about seven hundred million dollars for the projects. And UDOT is now saying, well, inflation, that's now going to be over eight hundred and twenty million, so we need all that money to go towards that. That may be right, I don't know, but if they're missing the mark that much in one year on fixing prices, then we need to have a further discussion in regards to that, but. So.
The prices are crazy, I guess I'm curious, is maybe that we can't do much more as a personnel issue, just not having enough.
It's.
Designers and.
Yeah.
All the things they need to actually get projects.
And they're worried about the competition with materials, concrete is a major issue. It actually should be freeing up, it's been difficult the past few years with two large projects. The prison. Using a ton of concrete as well as the airport, or a ton of concrete, and. And so, just pushing out the amount of concrete, the prices associated with that, but those projects should be slowing down.
Won't the Point and the Cairns create a lot of concrete need coming in in these upcoming years?
Oh, they, eventually, the Cairns, I mean, and I represent Sandy City, they're, they don't have any. Uber big projects that are currently approved, the Point. Legislature functions on emotion, and that's, you know, when it's not always rational decisions, I mean, well. But there's a lot of emotion driving their decisions, and everyone's really excited about the Karen, I mean, about the point, and what it's going to do. I still think it's years down the road, I'm, I haven't had permission to go out on site and start punching holes for environmental work on that. But I know that if you built that prison in the nineteen fifties, there's going to be asbestos in that building. And I know that when those prisoners changed the oil in those cars in the nineteen fifties, they weren't recycling it back then. So I want to know where it all ended up, and, you know, and what it's going to take, and I think, I think before you see something going up in the Point. We're a number of years down the road, that's my candid.
Thanks, I I just was thinking of the major projects that make the news all the time.
Well, and they talk about it, and they're all excited about it, but the one, and what I point to is when they get all excited, they start talking about timeframe, and I say. I'd like to go back and pull up the news articles about when the prison was going to open. Cause when they started that, that prison was supposed to be opened, I think, twenty, twenty, a couple of years ago, and. They're saying, we think maybe by this summer, maybe they'll start movements of prisoners over there, it just takes a lot longer to look through that. So I think that there's still a window that we can move some projects, and we just need to try and identify what those are and what we need to do. But the legislature will not, they're very reticent to start funding what I would call local roads. You know, I mean, it's like, okay, we need to resurface this subdivision, or we need to do that, they don't, they won't get into that, they just won't. But if you start talking about regionally significant roads like Highland Drive and Fort Union, and the impacts that we're facing with that.
Probably even include Creek Road on that.
To an extent, yeah, Creek Road, I mean, that moves a lot of traffic nowadays, a lot more than it did when I went to Brighton.
So when you. I just want to make sure I'm following, so when you say, you know, focus or, or, you know, put a, put a focus on some of those roads, are you then suggesting the widening of those roads? Or I'm not.
No, sometimes the widening is very, very expensive for something like Fort Union, but there, but I'll use the example. The stacking lane to turn left into Home Depot on Fort Union, I don't know how many of your officers respond there for rear end collisions. You know, at night, I mean, if you're going west on Fort Union and want to turn it towards Home Depot or into that area. Stacking comes well past the lane, out into the left lane and backs up, and that creates a traffic nightmare, and so. So there's things that they could do to mitigate and improve safety and traffic flow by creating better turn lanes, more stacking lanes. And those are very expensive projects when you start doing that kind of stuff, but those are the kind of things where I think if. You know, they march through Fort Union and say, what can we do to make traffic flow better on Fort Union, you know? Widening, it can get really expensive really fast, so there might be things to do.
We've, we've done. Resurfacing, surface treatments, just to keep things going, other infrastructure improvements to keep what we have, so people are moving. Rather than.
Yeah.
Dodge bottles or.
Yeah.
Cars.
So, you know, the, and I don't, I don't profess to know what those would all be, but I just think there's. Those kind of things that would help, probably, and those kind of things are more appealing to the legislature in the sense of saying, alright, how are we? Going to take this regionally significant road and make it more effective for people moving through, you know, traveling on those kind of things, and we can.
And so Brian mentioned that that there's a lot of money available now, so does that include? The infrastructure bill that's already been passed, or is that going to be additional monies? And do you have ideas on what maybe a city like ours can can look for with those, that that bill?
I, I don't know, have they talked about how they're going to spend the federal infrastructure money yet?
No, there's a couple things, there, the federal infrastructure, when they say there was a new, you know. One trillion dollars. A big chunk of that was the Surface Transportation Reauthorization Act, that the federals, federal. They kind of take double credit for it, it's like, we're funding X number of billions of dollars towards roads, but that's going to expire. Well, now we reauthorize that same amount of money, look, we spent five hundred billion dollars, and it's like, well. It's kind of like, you took it out of my back pocket, and you put it in my front pocket, and said, look what we did for. So UDOT's kind of saying, there's not as much as they claim, there is, there is some money, they will work on trying to authorize. Expenditure some of that, the ARPA monies, one of the things we should look at, I, we, I don't know. What do we do for water delivery, are we part of Jordan Valley, or are we part of our? The metropolitan. Metro, okay, cause I know in the last fifty million dollar round of ARPA, Metro received some of the grants. They applied for and received some of the grants on that, you know, if we have, we do our own sewer though, right? So we ought to work closely with those agencies to see if there's things we could do, and possibly stormwater. Okay, I know you've got a lot of old stormwater systems, so, and see if any of those, stormwater is a little bit more challenging on ARPA. Than sewer and water, but they're looking at, one of the things they've talked about is, is swapping out ARPA money. Cause they only receive half of that, they still have a big chunk of that, I think it's seven hundred and fifty million that they, they're slated to receive. I haven't spent yet, but swapping that out for projects that would qualify for ARPA money. And then freeing up general fund money that they might be able to assist jurisdictions and or state needs. And all, and so there's.
So thank you, I don't know if you have any other questions, I know Tim has another.
Yes, so real quickly, the, the process during the legislative session is, and we actually met recently with Chantel and Brian. They have some software that helps us in tracking, I provide you at least weekly, if not beyond that. Reports on where we're at with bills and what the the priorities are and issues, and then last year, we started a weekly meeting with the council. It was remotely, so these three don't have to run back from the Capitol. We did a remote meeting where we did a weekly update, starting about the second week of the legislature, and whoever can attend from the council. It's a public meeting, we open it and talk for about thirty or forty minutes to have a brief conversation, do you want to continue that?
Absolutely, what time of day did you do it last year?
Last year, we did Thursdays at nine AM, and if that's okay, whoever can be there, great, and that still works okay for your schedule.
Yes.
Yeah.
So we'll plan on that, and then we'll, we also have the Legislative Policy Committee that. Will give you weekly updates from that committee as well, so there's a lot of information that we will continue to provide you as part of the session, but these are. Some of the priorities that we're looking at.
And Tim, I might interrupt. Brian and Chantel, they do a great job of working with Lee and tracking and kind of keeping me informed, and meetings are actually helpful for me. I tell everybody, I'm working budget issues, and so for the first five weeks of those meetings, I'll be saying, well, there's not a whole lot to report, there's not a whole lot to report. Because they'll make, you know, the, the running joke is, is why does the legislature wait until the last day to make all the decisions? Because they can't wait any longer. But the bottom line is, there's a lot of budgetary decisions, there'll be a lot of discussions going on in the back room. You know, and we're, we are fortunate that we, Senator Cole Marv represents a small portion of Cottonwood Heights, but. He is one of the individuals in the back room making those decisions, and so that's very helpful. Yeah, I mean, it. I, I was having a discussion with Mayor Zoltanski out in Sandy, and I had a chance to meet her, and. We were talking about just politics, and I said, I said, Mayor, I'm going to ask you a question, and I don't ask you this in any way. To be offensive, but I just, as an educational, I said, can you tell me currently who the minority leader is in the US House of Representatives? And she looked at me and said, uh, I, I, I said, that's alright, I can't remember either, okay, I think it's. Okay, so I said, but, and I said, and the only reason I point that out is. We always think that politics in Utah is going to be different than anywhere else in the country, okay, it's not, it's the same, the majority party is going to make most of those policies. Okay, just as they do in Congress or any other state where they're the majority party, and having somebody in that majority party leadership in the room where those decisions. Are being made is very helpful.
Great, well, thank you for coming, and we really appreciate it, I can't emphasize enough how important we, you know, what you do for our city is, so. Thank you for coming, and and we look forward to engaging closely in the next two weeks.
Thank you, Mayor, and congratulations to the city council, new, new city council members and new mayor, look forward to working with you, we've had. Brian and I, we go back about a long time.
We were freshman legislators together.
Yeah.
While there's a majority of council members here, here, at least not a majority of names, you have to learn.
The only thing I can tell you about Brian is, is he talked me into doing something once, or maybe I talked him into it, I can't, that part gets a little fuzzy. But the Speaker of the House called us, and pardon my French, what the hell are you two clowns down there doing? Yeah, and he actually called Brian and said that, Brian, and I said, tell him to call me, and this speaker just stared me down and.
Basically, the message back was, we represent our constituents, not you, so we're going with our.
It went something like that, that's how, we'll stick on the outside of the story.
But we'll make it fun, we'll try to make it as informative as we can, and it, you know, it, it a little, starts kind of slow. Then it gets real fast, and things happen really fast, once they start moving, it gets, it happens quick, so. A lot of things can change from week to week, so, and if there's anything real important, we always let Tim know, so he can let y'all know, but. And, and any of you, of course, are welcome to come up anytime, you know, legislators or do whatever, you have to facilitate that, so.
Thanks for fighting for us, thank you.
We love it, and it's a great city to fight for, I mean, I'll tell you, our city has a phenomenal, a very good reputation up on the hill, because. We're not one of those cities that does crazy things, so that's been a good thing.
We leave that to.
Makes our job a little.
We are going to have a group of the youth council down there for the Utah League Day of Legislature, so if you want a seat at the table with them, just maybe let Tim know. Make sure it gets reserved. I don't know what Greg does either, but.
I don't either, yeah. Usually I stand outside there and try and peddle the credit cards, see if I can take someone to lunch, so I can spend. It's, but it's a small one.
Well, thank you, thank you. So let's move on, let's review our business meeting agenda. So our second item of business will be tonight, the Pledge of Allegiance led by Doug Peterson, thank you, Doug, for doing that. We then have a special opportunity to honor a family, and Riley, you'll be involved with this, and I, I will. Bring them up to the podium, if that's okay, and maybe talk a little bit about their story and ask them some questions, and then you're, you're going to present them an award, is that right?
Do you have the write up?
I do.
Okay, are you going to present that, or you?
I, I can, I'd rather you do it.
I'll do it.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, if you come up there with them too, I would love that, that would be great, so it's a family who basically. Sensed the fire was happening and warned a neighbor who was asleep, and who probably wouldn't have made it if they didn't do that, so it's, it's. We got, so we have a fun little opportunity to honor some great citizens in our, in our city. So the next item, four point O, we will do citizen comments, and I will. Continue Mayor Peterson's process of making sure that people understand beforehand that they are very. That we don't attack, and that, and that we're happy to hear from them, but, but we don't attack people personally. And then we will, we'll hold them to the three minutes so that we can move our meeting along. Next will be the public hearing, five point one, obviously, Mike, we will turn that over to you, anything you want to discuss right now?
It's coming up in the workshop.
Yep, you're right, sorry, Tim's staff reports. And then we will have our, our, our great police report from Lieutenant Bartlett, is that, is that right? Lieutenant Bartlett, Robbie, chief, sorry, and then our Public Works Director, Mark Matt Schiff, will be presenting to us. From his department, and then we will move on to action items, and. We have, the first one that we're going to consider tonight is going to be a resolution two zero two two dash zero one, which is. Declaring some property surplus from the city, and Chief and Scott will have you probably both talk, is that right, to Scott here? Were you, were you want to talk about that at all? Okay. There's tasers, and I believe there's a. Doug, it's a Harley Davidson, so you might want to see.
Just sold one of my buys, so.
But the, the standard process of disposing of them, right?
Yeah, the one we're talking about is a road king, we normally keep them for years where that, there's a tipping point where they're at high value, and they start to decline. So we can sell it at a high value, and the money goes, but we ask for the money back from the council, and then we, that's how we replace. The tasers are obsolete, we've entered into a program and bought all new tasers. In fact, they're the kind that when you pull them out of the holster, the body cameras actually activate automatically, which is.
Great.
Great.
Is that activation, if it's not already activated?
If it's not already activated, yeah.
We should be.
But in those high stress situations, sometimes they forget, but it, it makes my job much easier to actually have video.
Yeah.
Through the years, we were able to acquire extra tasers as they'd break or whatever, and so. With our ring with taser, when we sent back all the old ones to get the new ones, we had some extra. So we're asking you to surplus the ones that we have extra that we didn't remove with taser, and maybe perhaps allocate those to small departments. Who don't otherwise have them, so they have a non, less lethal option.
Yeah, that's great.
There's some value to them still.
There is some value to them, it's just, Taser doesn't warranty them, they don't, you know, work on them. Yeah.
Great, thank you, Chief, appreciate that, the, the next three resolutions, so there, there are three board appointments. That require an official appointment, so we will, we'll vote on all three of those. One of them is for the mosquito abatement district board that Council Member Peterson is going to.
That we're looking. I didn't know he'd gotten his law degree, I apologize, Sean. I didn't know he'd gotten his law degree, I apologize, Sean.
And then, uh, the, the UFA Fire Board and, as well as the Central Wassatch Commission, I'll be serving on. And then we'll finish with the consent calendar. Any questions or comments that anybody has on the, the business meeting tonight? Okay, we'll move on to our next item in our work session agenda, which is staff reports. Item four, um, letter A is, uh, the committee report, so I am going to, uh, briefly we, fortunately, we've had a, had the opportunity as, as a mayor-elect and, and some council member elects along with the council members to talk about these committee assignments, so we have these already assigned out, and so I'll, I'll just mention them briefly and then if, if we have any comments or concerns, we can bring it up when I, when I'm finished. So I will be serving on the Wassatch Regional Council, the Conference of Mayors, the Council of Governments, COG, and COM, Central Wassatch Commission, CWC, the Track Board, which is Tourist Recreation Cultural Convention Advisory Board for the, for the county. The UFA Board, United Fire, the UFA Finance Committee, I'll be serving with. There's a, this Public Works Subcommittee, um, that for, for COG that I'll be serving on. A City Audit Committee, I'll be the Canyon's School District Liaison. That, don't worry about that fourth quarter working group, that's not, uh, an, an active committee counter committee anymore. And then the, the Legislative Policy Committee for the League of Cities and Towns, I, I'll be serving along with City Manager Tim and Councilmember Sean Newell. The IT Committee is a new one for the mayor, but I have some experience with that, so I requested that. So I am gonna be serving on the IT Committee with our IT staff and with Tim. And then the last one for me is the Salt Lake County Zap. That, that I'll be working with. Doug, Councilmember Peterson, uh, will be on the City Audit Committee. And like I mentioned before, he will be on the, a new member of the Salt Lake Valley Mosquito Abatement Board. We're excited for him to do that, he has an interest there. Uh, he will also be on the Cottonwood Heights Compensation Committee. And then the Cottonwood Heights Business Association Liaison for our city. Councilmember Bracken, I have asked for, uh, to, to be the mayor pro tempore, we'll actually talk about that more in our next item. He, he will continue his great service for Butlerville Days. CH two, the Rec Center, the Youth City Council that he does such a great job with. Wassatch Front Waste and Recycling, he'll be on that board as, as well as the, the Cottonwood Heights Budget Committee that he'll serve. Chair that. Uh, Councilmember Newell will be Emergency Planning, which I served on as a citizen, which I, I love that board. You know, Assistant Chief Brenham, that is amazing and, and then Councilmember Newell will do a great job with that committee and then that, they do it an amazing job of making sure that we are prepared as a city. Uh, he will also be on the Arts Council. The, uh, which, uh, I think will be a great experience, the Cottonwood Heights Budget Committee that he'll be with, uh, Councilmember Bracken. And then, like I said, he will be with me on the, the League of Cities and Towns Legislative Policy Committee. Uh, Councilmember Burrell will be the Historic Committee, which I think is one of the, the best committees in the, in the city, I love that. And if you don't have that book, please get it and, and, I mean, it's amazing, I've spent a lot of time with that book. Uh, she will also, uh, serve with the Association of Municipal Councils with other council members from cities. Uh, and, and the Cottonwood Heights Benefits and Compensation Committee, along with, uh, Councilmember Peterson. And then, you can see Tim, Council City Manager Tim Tingi, he'll, like I mentioned, he'll be on the Legislative Policy Committee. Tim does the, uh, the, the Beck, he's on the, the Board of Trustees for Beck, which, uh, is an important important, uh, position that he has. He chairs the, the Budget Committee. The short-term rental for the League of, League of Cities, he's in the committee there. He's on the Strategy Group for them as well, the legislative, he does a legislative update for the CMA. The Data Committee meeting, and then finally, he's also with the Benefits and Compensation. Uh, and two more. The Transcom Technical Advisory Committee for WFRC, as well as, like I mentioned, the Vet Board.
Yeah, and that's actually, the, the Vet Board of Operations is Chief Russo. Technical Advisory Committee, yeah.
Great, great. Okay. Any questions, comments?
Mayor, did you mention Parks Trails Open Space?
Oh, we didn't.
It, it is there.
Well, actually, if I may, just, uh, a reminder, Mayor, you know, we touched on Oh, I, I just was gonna say that, that, you know, you and I had touched on that in a December conversation, so.
Yes. So one of the things that we're gonna talk about in our retreat is, is, is some components of the, the P-TOS. The Parks Trails Open Space and, and perhaps where Ellen can be helpful in, in, uh, adding to that, as well as maybe even, you know, breaking up and adding in the, the committee that we'll actually end up talking about.
We'll wait and do that.
Yeah, we'll do that at the retreat.
And that, and I think it was Councilmember Peterson that was gonna work.
With, with, yes, yes, yes. Did I miss that or did that?
We sent a, a, we resent the documents which had that change.
Got it, I did, yeah, okay, so, no worries. Okay, I mentioned this, uh, and we would talk a little bit more, item B under, before is a Mayor Pro Tempore, and I have asked, due to his years and years of experience, Councilmember Bracken to, uh, to be the Mayor Pro Tempore. Now, th- there's actually a statute within our city, is it an ordinance?
Ordinance, ordinance.
An ordinance, it's actually an ordinance, sorry, um, two point two zero point zero four zero for Mayor Pro Tempore, and, and I'm gonna read to you a little bit so that we understand kind of what's, what, uh, this ordinance has to, to say. At, at the first regularly scheduled meeting of the City Council in January of even numbered years, which, which here we are, or soon thereafter, the City Council by secret ballot shall select one of its members to act as the Mayor Pro Tempore, Pro Tempore during the period of the mayor's inability or refusal to act. The designation, designation will be effective until the first regularly scheduled meeting of the City Council in the in January of the next even numbered year, so it's a, a, a two-year appointment. And, and like, it is a, a, a secret ballot, just because I've talked to, to Councilmember Bracken about it, doesn't mean you have to vote for it. So we will actually, um, conduct that vote here. I've just got a couple other things that I wanted to read to you about this position, because I think it's important. Uh, it says, "The duties of the Pro Mayor Pro Tempore shall be limited to presiding over members of the City Council and signing official documents." "The Mayor Pro Tempore shall act only in case of the mayor's absence or his inability or refusal to act." "The mayor may request any member of the City Council or the city manager to represent the city in, in, in one or more of its relationships." Uh, "When no designee is, is appointed, the Mayor Pro Tempore shall, uh, represent the city." So hopefully, that was correct, any, any questions?
Uh, it's good to have someone on the P-TOS designated, so then I don't have a surprise. Not that that would be bad, I, I, I was just an example, but yeah, it was a
Absolutely. So are we gonna conduct that vote now?
Yes, so we have papers there in front of you with a pen. If you would fill it out and pass it down to me.
Can you look at these?
Yes. Oh, one more.
Okay, so we have one for Scott Bracken, two for Scott Bracken. Four for Scott Bracken and five for Scott Bracken, so it's unanimous.
Thank you. Just have the mayor to be as good as the other mayors the second, the other times I served and just be here.
Thank you for, for that, and I, I appreciate that. Okay, and then it looks like, Mike, we're gonna turn the time over to you now for that, uh, Racquet Club Drive parking petition.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, I'm gonna just go join the Zoom meeting here and my presentation up. While this is loading, this is a, there is a process in the city ordinance, in Title eleven, um, that allows any resident anywhere in the city to submit a petition for permit parking, which, uh, if successful and approved, creates a, an area along a, a public street uh, where parking is allowed by permit only, and generally permits are issued only to those, uh, living along that designated area. We have, uh, that I've gone through this process, um, somewhat recently, we have two, um, two kind of distinct areas, there's some other areas by the Rec Center that are a, a little bit different, but, but similar, but uh, the Ferguson Canyon Trailhead, uh, the Timberline Drive Prospector area has a permit parking program. And then just at the last council meeting, uh, of twenty twenty-one, uh, the mayor and council approved another one, uh, on Canyon Center Parkway. Uh, just along, uh, the, the residential development within that project. So this is a, another permit request, and this actually came in the same time as the
Just send a take one thing.
Yeah.
The area by the, the Red Center is actually not a permit parking. What we, what we ended up going with there is just a time of year, time of day restriction. Not dissimilar to what we do with the high school, where there's certain days and times that no one is allowed, but when someone is allowed, anyone is allowed. So
Yeah, thank you, yeah, slightly different.
The permit.
A di- different process, uh, different ordinance that regulates the creation of an area like that. So, uh, I think that the background there is to emphasize that, uh, these petitions go through a very specific and detailed ordinance process. Where staff makes a recommendation based on some pretty strict criteria in the city ordinance. We go through that here, if I can change this slide, there we go. Uh, so this particular area is, uh, in the Canyon Center area. It includes Racquet Club Circle, which is that cul-de-sac that you see on the bottom of the screen there. And then the west side of Racquet Club Drive, not the east side of Racquet Club Drive, where, uh, I think historically there has been a lot of on-street parking for uh, employees or patrons of porcupine and, and, um, park and ride, kind of ski parking. So, so the west side of, of Racquet Club and Racquet Club Circle is this area. Back in November, this petition originally did not include Racquet Club Drive, it just included Racquet Club Circle. Uh, and at the time, staff had expressed concerns that, um, that there wasn't clear evidence provided of a, of a current existing parking issue within that circle. And, and that's critical, because he, these, for these to be successful, there is supposed to be a, a current issue um, with commuter parking, which, uh, is parking that does not originate from the area. So, a summary of this request, again, to establish permit parking on Racquet Club Circle in the west side of Racquet Club Drive. Uh, the purpose, and this is the purpose that's stated in the petitioner's narrative, is to preserve the safety and integrity of the neighborhood in response to the ongoing and future development at Canyon Center. Uh, the, the stated rationale, again, from the petition, uh, is that development in the area will lead to an increase in commuter vehicles to the area. I, I, I think it's, uh, important to state that while the area was updated, we didn't get any updated photos or narrative. Um, so the purpose and rationale are the same as they were, uh, back in November, and we had expressed concerns at the time that, that there wasn't enough evidence provided. And, and you can see here, the rationales, uh, the, the request here is a little more proactive, saying, you know, they, they believe there will be concerns in the future, uh, when, when the Canyon Center is fully developed. Um, which, which may be the case, but is not part of the criteria in the ordinance. So now, uh, eighteen affected parcels are, are included in this permit area, eleven of which we've received signatures. So sixty-one percent of the affected properties have signed the petition. Uh, fifty-one is required to bring this to the council level, so it does meet the bar, but it's a little lower than our previous um, requests have been.
Full disclosure, Mike, the, uh, the person who, who submitted this let me know that the seven that didn't sign are LLCs that they were having a hard time
Okay.
owning the homes.
Yes.
That they weren't, that they were having a hard time defining who those shareholders were.
Sure, regardless, you know, they, they didn't meet the threshold, so that's why it's in front of the council. This, just an FYI, is who signed and who didn't. Just to visualize. These were the, the only two photos submitted in the petition, and, and by looking at these, uh, the, the predominant parking we see here is on the east side of Racquet Club Drive, which is not, again, in, in this proposed petition. And it's unclear, um, from the petition and these photos, uh, the extent of parking existing parking issues on the west side of Racquet Club Drive. Uh, a- as well as in Racquet Club Circle, so, so the photos don't, um, didn't help staff's analysis a whole lot here. Obviously, we, we are aware that, uh, and probably since before Cottonwood Heights was a city, um, a lot of cars have parked on the east side of Racquet Club Drive. And I'm sure they do park on the west side, I just don't know to what extent and how often and, and how much of an issue it is.
Mike, I have a quick question.
Yeah.
In that photo, obviously, we're talking about seasons, two different seasons here. What, what is the reason for the commuter parking during the, uh, not snow ski season?
I think a lot of it is, is staff that works at the commercial, uh, Porcupine Restaurant and the other commercial buildings.
So they'll park south of the
Yeah, they park along Racquet Club Drive there.
Coffee shop, this is
And, and Alpha Coffee as well, yeah.
I see.
So these findings are all included in your staff memo, and, and the findings in the memo are listed under the ordinance criteria, so you have that in a little more detail. Uh, but, but here's staff's analysis kind of summed up. The petition does meet the signature criteria, which is why it's in front of the mayor and council here. Um, however, staff finds that, that based on the evidence provided, the proposal does not reasonably comply with those ordinance criteria listed in City Code. Fails to demonstrate an existing issue with commuter vehicle parking within Racquet Club Circle especially. And, and not, I, I will say, not enough evidence was submitted to demonstrate, clearly demonstrate, uh, the presence of, of commuter parking issues on the west side of Racquet Club Drive. I haven't heard from anybody else, everyone affected by this, uh, petition was sent letters. They're invited here, so we may get more information tonight, but up until now, I, I haven't received more information than what, uh, what you've seen. A photo submitted are outside of the requested permit area. Uh, also, the petition clearly identifies a concern of congestion and cul-de-sac vehicular turnaround traffic caused by the future apartment building. In other words, they're concerned that, uh, traffic will use that Racquet Club Circle to drive and turn around and, and be on their way. Both, again, while, while that may be valid, uh, uh, concerns in accordance with this ordinance, future concerns uh, or, or worries of future parking and vehicular traffic, just using a, a public street to turn around, or neither are eligible criteria that would merit, uh, approval of this permit. Um, a- as stated, I, I think the police department's been pretty consistent in their, uh, their viewpoint of permit parking applications, so this has not changed. Uh, the same for Ferguson, same for Canyon Center. Um, but, but the police department's opposed to the creation of the, the permit parking area due to concerns with, in general, with parking restrictions on public streets. Uh, that, that review is also in your, uh, staff report. Uh, and then we did, we didn't mention this in the staff report, but if there is concern about, uh, traffic congestion or um, you know, maybe on-street parking in general, in a way that, uh, creates other safety concerns for pedestrians or, or vehicles and residents in the area. There are other council options, like Councilmember Bracken alluded to, uh, you know, where, where a, a universal parking restriction could be implemented there. Um, that, that does not hand out permits to some and not others, it's just whoever parks along there is subject to the same rules.
Did they give you any feedback whether they, they would be interested in this, this different solution?
Not, not right now, I, I haven't received anything yet, but that is, that's always an option if there's a, a council concern there that something should be done in the area. I think some of the area does have no parking along it, correct me if I'm wrong on that, Matt. Uh, closer to Fort Union Boulevard on Racquet Club, I don't know off the top of my head the extent of that. You know, the council could suggest that be extended, uh, you know, other, other traffic mitigation options could be explored.
Is that a better solution, Chief, for you?
It is, because how often times they'll come in and make the argument that's a safety hazard or kids emerge from parking, it's dangerous, or we can't get a fire truck down the road, um, and those are legitimate issues, but it doesn't go away if you say, well, unless they're my friends and I give them a permit, you know, to park there, then it's okay. It's either a danger or it's not a danger. And if it's a danger, then let's red curb it, we'll put signs up there and solve that issue, so yes.
Great, thank you.
So, I was gonna say with the parking, um, from the other businesses that are up there, um, some of them are up there a long time, I believe. Um, we initially had tried to address some of this with the development of Canyon Center, having some of those businesses included in the area, but that was opposed by some of those owners that had misunderstood, I think, some of the intent of what we, what we were looking at doing there. So that section, uh, right on Fort Union is not part of the, uh, the development agreement. But, and their parking has been the way that it is for many, many, many
So which section are you talking about?
The, uh, well, the
Commercial buildings.
Yeah, Seven Eleven, the ski shop. Yeah, seven eleven, the ski shop.
Porcupine.
Porcupine, and then the the office building.
So Scott, there's not, it sounds to me like there's not sufficient parking for the employees.
That's what it sounds like to me, and that's not a new issue, that's not something that's come up at twenty twenty one, or I mean, that's that's a. That's been there from the date of incorporation and so. My other issue is, as I I tend to agree or lean towards what the chief has said that. If there's going to be a rule unless there's some. I really want to say extraordinary, but some sort of compelling reason to make it different. And it it's it's easier and it's better if it's consistent for everyone, if it's public street that both pays for. Although I understand everybody wants the street in front of their house to be theirs. That only applies to people who live on.
Yeah, but the safety issue like the chief said will not go away. If your permitted people are allowed to park there.
Depends on how much permitting goes on, it may mitigate it.
And then there's there's trying to enforcement is another issue.
Yes, quickly to summarize from staff's perspective, a couple of things, we we do review each of these individually on their own merit, we. Staff have the community economic development director who the ordinance says makes the recommendation. With police and public safety input, obviously, we did recommend approval of the previous two and those were approved, we just based on. You know, the evidence provided and the detail in the petition and some of the rationale didn't feel this quite. You know, met those criteria while we did feel the other ones did. I don't want to say there's not a parking issue and I would, if I had to guess, I would guess the commuter vehicle parking is probably worse. On the very north end of the proposed parking area, just because that's what's closest to all the commercial activity down there. But once you get back up in here, it's, there's a lot of driveways, you can't, it's illegal to park in front of a driveway regardless.
Is there proposed egress west out of that apartment building that is yet to be built?
The, no, it's right here.
Runs north.
So it's just right there and then out.
Yeah.
But there's only one or there are two.
I think there's one entrance into a garage and one into a parking lot on the surface, but they're both within Canyon Center Parkway.
All in the north.
So you mentioned that we're now supposed to consider future development.
Under this ordinance.
Under this ordinance, okay, because I I do know the residents feel a little bit picked on with with what's going on there and and so. I do have a little bit of compassion for what they feel. Anyway, so yeah, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna interject since this is in my district, but a a lot of the residents have been pulling me into this and. And and you know, one of the big challenges, especially during ski season. Is as people wait for Wasatch Boulevard to open up to get onto the, to get to Little Cotton Canyon, and I suppose Big Cotton Canyon should be the same. Then the people in Apple Valley, as well as the people in this circle, are seeing cars coming off of Fort Union and kind of camping out. Within this area on these peak winter mornings, you know, waiting until they can. Get to the, so I think that that these residents, in addition to the. Challenges that they either currently feel related to this project or they know are coming as. The hotel runs at full occupancy as the as the office buildings start to be occupied. Et cetera, the additional growth between all of that and then again, the motorists. Who are in the winter time, you know, kind of staging in these areas. They're, I think they're getting very anxious, so I think we may be dealing with something that, as you said, that it's rather multifaceted and they're.
Right.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
And one thing that the previous council talked about is reviewing this ordinance, which is something that we are going to place on the. Retreat agenda to discuss long-term implications of that as well as the traffic. Components and possibly funding some some studies to look at different things, so those are things that. We will put on the agenda if you want to retain them on there and and talk about them at the retreat, kind of the global issues related to this, not. The specific.
I know we only have thirty days, right, from the time of petition?
So the ordinance requires the council to render decision within thirty days, so that. Could be at the next meeting, could be at the first February meeting.
Didn't we talk about lengthening that process time or not?
Oh, that's what. That was brought up, I think that's what's going to be discussed.
One question I have is what availability do we have to the Canyon Center in that parking? I know it's not convenient to park in there if farther away you get from the businesses. But that parking that happens all the way along all those streets.
There.
What's our availability to that parking?
The underground parking, it it's public parking, but it's technically for Canyon Recreation. That's that's how it's described, I believe, in the development.
That summer, winter.
Well, just, yeah, year-round Canyon Recreation.
How do you, how do you filter those people out?
Well, that that's a good question. There is on-street parking and there's the new permit area in Canyon Center is is right in front of this. But from about that point there, all the way around the corner, there are, there's that on-street parking is allowed there. It is not, this is an old photo, it's not currently allowed on the north side of that road, it's it's restricted there.
I just, I've heard the the, there's a lot of availability in that parking structure. And I don't know if it's because of the lack of knowledge of who can park there, but it would sure be nice to clean up those streets. And especially if you have.
I I do think a lot of this, I think you're right, a lot of this parking, especially in the winter, is ski parking. And and we would love for everybody to go park in the structure, right now it's free, there's no reason not to, other than maybe not knowing it's there.
There's uncertainty about times and when they can, because I know there's a certain amount for the condominiums and different things in the businesses there.
About employees parking from those businesses, are they allowed in the structure?
I I don't believe they are technically allowed right now, the the. Businesses on top of the structure have their own reserved parking, so they would obviously be able to. I don't know, I think it would require an agreement.
Or say, well, maybe the businesses say, well, can we have ten spots and we'll pay extra number of dollars.
The convenience of that is just as good as the convenience on racket club parking.
Plus it's hour, the weather too.
So so we fully acknowledge it's a complicated area, there's going to be a lot more. You know, development happening here and and probably warrants being looked at, but on the merit of this. Chapter eleven point two two, the part permit parking ordinance. We just didn't feel we got enough information here to to support.
So thank you, Mike, oh, go ahead, Doug.
I was gonna say, that's not counting, we hope to have a meeting area there for the city. Right about, isn't it, Mike, about where the twenty-two dash twenty-five is?
Yeah, this parcel here.
Right, and so we're hoping that that will be a great gathering place too, but we will have that parking figured out, hopefully in Canyon Center.
Supposedly, I think that's in the plan.
So my preference would be to not move this today, do we we wait, is, does anybody feel differently?
Is it only? It's not scheduled for action, only for public hearing today.
Okay, public hearing today.
Yeah, great, okay, and and if the council, you know, if you want more information, we request you, I think the petitioner will be here. You know, certainly if there's more evidence here that we haven't seen, willing to review that and bring it back.
Okay, great, thank you, Mike, and it looks like you're up again with the the city code.
So this, we talked about this briefly, so council member Bracken and Peterson will be familiar with this, but. Because the council's changed, we're bringing it back again. This is a proposed ordinance amendment to add a fire sprinkling requirement for. Homes over ten thousand square feet. And this was recommended by unified fire authority officials, Riley along with Chief Brad Larson and. Our area inspector Sean Peterson came to us. And and among other things recommended, and I think they're recommending to all the cities they work with, adoption of of this. Requirement, and this comes right out of the Utah State Code, it says, this is a quote, an area authority or an authority having jurisdiction over a structure. Built in accordance with the International Residential Code, which covers single-family townhomes. Apartment complexes are built under the IVC, it's a whole different process there, but kind of your low to medium density residential structures are usually covered by the IRC. Basically, this says, a a city may require an automatic sprinkler system for structures. Governed by the IRC, meeting certain conditions, and the one that unified fires is. Most supportive of being adopted locally is the condition. That an automatic sprinkling system can be required if a residential structure. Under the IRC is greater than ten thousand square feet in size, we don't, we don't have a ton of them, but we do have them. I believe, Riley, correct me if I'm wrong, right now, if if your home is a certain size and it. It's either much larger than other homes in the area or there's not adequate fire flow. There's still a requirement to find alternate fire suppression systems, it kind of leads towards fire sprinkling anyways. But can't outright require it without the the local jurisdiction requiring it by code. So this, and this is in your your memo as well, I don't want to read through all this, but this basically is the proposed. Text that we would bring forward at a future meeting for consideration. And and again, what that says is an automatic fire sprinkling system would be required. For any residential structure built in accordance with the IRC, if it's over ten thousand square feet. Or if it's in an area where it's, its size is is double or greater than the average of the the tall floor area. Of other homes in the subdivision, so you have a subdivision full of homes that were a thousand square feet and you had a nine thousand square foot home. This would, this requirement would would be enacted. There are, there's an exception here, again, all of this is right out of state code. If your home is outside of a wildland interface area, it's developed on its own, so one lost subdivision, just a parcel. And there's defensible space, then even a home over ten thousand square feet would not require that suppression system. So our plan is just to introduce this in the work session, we'll be back for public hearing, probably at the next meeting, and then it'll be on. For action, probably in February, if that's okay with council.
Great, yeah, I don't see any downside to that so far, so, yeah.
How often do we run into this situation?
Not a lot, we do have a few larger developments, Granite Oaks, some of the homes up there get pretty large. But, you know, it's it's not often, the majority of homes are well under.
Do a number of other cities have this already in effect?
That's probably.
Yeah, there's quite a few that do, I don't know a lot of time, I know this has been going. Both within and outside of UFA, there's a lot that enact this.
I think of this large home that caught on fire on the side of two fifteen.
Is exactly why, because a lot of them are built in inaccessible areas.
Right.
They're so large that when you get a fire in there, sometimes it takes hours, that was a full day, they they estimate. Before anyone even knew there was a fire in there, at that point, it's. Yeah, so the sprinklers help catch that, and then the reason why they do the subdivisions is it also protects neighboring properties.
Like in Colorado.
Yeah.
In the case of a. Town hall or a multiple families, it's the size, it's the size of the building, not the number of units.
Right, it's the size within the walls, within the, it says their exterior walls.
Two, two unit thing, each would be allowed kind of five, and then it goes to the floors as well, so.
Yeah, I believe that's correct.
So on Seventeenth East, for instance, would that have changed that?
Those may be IVC buildings already, I think those. And and I think it's more nuanced in the fire code than I fully understand, but. When you get over a certain size or a certain construction type or density, then it kicks into the international building codes. Which requires that anyway.
Disney Velpers, look at that and then.
Yeah, yeah.
Does the last bullet point on the exceptions, is that a little broad, or do we do we worry about that at all, and what they could determine would be defensible space?
I think the fire code and maybe even the city code has a definition of what that is.
Okay.
That's pretty.
Okay.
Pretty defined.
It's definitely, great, okay.
Same with the interface, that's all, that's a pretty good description.
Thank you, Mike. I mean, I remember when my neighbor went up, I mean, this, it's the first, they showed up and one of the first things they did was they say, where's. Where's your gas line? I was, oh, well, it's right next to the house is on fire, yeah, you know, go turn it off. I'm just something you don't normally think of, you know, when you get things that are really close, that becomes a big scary issue.
Yeah. Thank you. Thanks, appreciate that. So the last item under staff reports is item E, which is a meeting time discussion, you probably don't know what that means yet. So I am looking at a a a different option of when we would start our work sessions. And that would be moving that time up to four P M. And the reason for that is is a couple folds, I want to go over some of the reason, and and if it doesn't work right, the reason that I want to to bring this up is to have a discussion about it. To not make a decision, starting at four o'clock would allow us to be able to to not feel rushed to get through sometimes and to actually have to come back. After the the business meeting like has happens fair fairly regularly. I think we could give our, feel like we're able to deep deeper dive into some issues than maybe. Went and tried to hurry to get ready so that we're on time for the business meeting. And then one thing that Tim and I talked about that I really like is. Four o'clock would be a little early to start dinner, but as a as staff. And and the council together, we would probably do a hard stop no matter what at six thirty and allow us to eat dinner together. And 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 to actually have a little bit of a social impact where. You know, some some of us like to eat earlier, we might need to get a power bar or something to take to to power through it. But so I wanted to bring that up and 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 see what your thoughts were on starting the business meeting or, yeah, the business, or I'm sorry, the work session. At four P M instead of five P M.
I guess, I mean, I guess the contrasting option would be. Coming back after the business meeting and going as late as whatever.
Correct.
We need it.
Correct, which which is.
It still happens.
I was very familiar with when we never ended the meeting on the same day we started it. We're past that time.
Yeah, we could just talk a lot faster. No, I I would.
Yeah, I I think that does seem reasonable and and. For me personally, I'd rather have that little space and and not try to.
I like that idea.
After the meeting, I I do like the idea, yes.
That was dinner a lot nicer.
Staff, what do you feel?
So from a transparency perspective, we we still record this, it's available. If if people can't attend, there's no public comment in this meeting, so there's no option for people to. To provide comment, but they can, they can watch it later, they can still watch it at four o'clock like they can at five o'clock. And so from a transparency perspective, I don't think it has a a major impact to start a little earlier, I know other cities that do that as well. The county meets, Salt Lake County, they they meet in the daytime anyway for a lot of their meetings, so. I think there's still options for transparency and and I think.
Great, if that's the case, then I think we'll move forward and and do our next work session, do we need to? Motion for that?
Nope, we'll just go that direction.
Okay, great, one one of the things that I wrote down is that perhaps we'd look at a. After a couple of months, we'll reevaluate and make sure that we still feel like everything's working well, and I do want to look at possibly moving. The business meeting to six thirty, if if we end up seeing that we've got plenty of time to to then eat after and be together and and instead of waiting around. So in a couple of months, maybe we'll reevaluate and see if that's a possibility, so, thank you. Okay, so there is, the next item is review of calendars and upcoming events, and they're not at this time.
Can I just bring up a couple of things related to the calendar, so on the, and we don't have it on here, on the twenty fifth, we're planning, January twenty fifth. We're planning on the retreat, that will start at eight thirty, and you'll be getting more information on this as we get closer, but it'll start at eight thirty. And then go until we're done, could be even in the evening, depending on the amount of time, but it will be an all-day event. We will have lunch provided and we'll take a break for lunch as well. So keep in mind that, and like I say, there'll be more that will be provided, and then. Councilmember Bracken brought this up, that the Utah League of Cities and Towns, as the legislative session starts. Has a local officials day up at the legislature, and they have a dinner. Or not a dinner, a luncheon, excuse me, that is typically around twelve or twelve thirty, I'll get more of the details, this is all COVID restriction. Needs to be verified with that, but they're tentatively planning on that.
What was the date?
It's on the nineteenth, the nineteenth of January, so you'd need to be there around twelve. And I'll get you more of the specifics on that, but we need to register you if you plan to attend. So if you'll look at your calendars, if you want to let me know now, great, we will get all of you registered, whoever wants to attend. And that's what I need to know now is the registration side. You'll be doing your own, the youth city, oh, by the way, this luncheon will include. All of our legislators and we typically bring them to our table to sit with them.
The ones that like us enough and don't like.
Yeah.
Or holiday.
We have to arm ourselves a little bit, so so includes that, includes our youth city council. That Scott will be, or council member Bracken will be there with. And then it includes mayors and council members from all across the state as well.
We have fifteen youth council members that are signed up.
Okay. So it.
How long is that, Tim?
It it usually lasts from, they have a speaker also, a keynote speaker, so it usually lasts about two, two and a half. Two to two and a half hours.
Now, I have in my calendar an all-day event that starts with a seven A M breakfast by the ULCT on January nineteenth.
Yeah, that would be.
That's, that this is part of that.
It's part of that.
Okay, then I'm already, I've already got it, okay.
Yeah.
Because the earlier.
Yeah, it's the earlier, we we have not. Yeah, it's the earlier. We we have not typically gone to that breakfast component. It's the luncheon that.
Bones will prove that the the kids, the kids do.
The kids do. So you're welcome to do that, but we have to register you for the lunch. So if you don't look at your calendars, if you if you need to wait a day or so, let me know, just let me know and.
Thanks, Tim. Thank you. We, item six, we do not have any items for. Necessitating a closed meeting tonight. To that, I would. Entertain a motion to adjourn and reconvene the business meeting at seven P M.
Hi.
I think.
I motion.
He's staring at me.
It's okay. It's just, it has a way of doing that closing one, start of the other, so.
You didn't say we have a full session.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's easy.
Then I I motion that we adjourn this work meeting.
Great.
I gotta break you guys in.
I think it sounds broke.
Great, we are. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.